Go on out, there's plenty of eggs for everybody.
Good evening. This is the October 16th meeting of the Chaco Planning Board. Nancy, will you take the role, please?
Here, present.
Here. I ask if we have a motion for approval of the minutes.
I still don't know.
Second.
I would like to make a correction. On the third page, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th paragraph down, in the middle of the second line, the garage would have the first floor remain, and the third floor will become the second floor. Because it said, the garage would have the first and third levels remaining. Which, I think it clarified.
Yes, Mrs. Lee.
Putting it that way, okay? Do we have any other comments or corrections? Do you agree to amendment, amending that? Is there agreement on amending the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tenacious, thank you. On our agenda this evening, we have 115 Main Street Parking Lot, which is a return. We have 40 Marble Dell Road, which is signage. 62 Main Street, which is signage for the bank. 2B Columbus Avenue, which is a sign. And 112 Main Street, which is signs. We do not have 78 Fisher Avenue or 130 Columbus Avenue because they are still involved in getting approvals from the zoning board. So they will not be on our agenda this evening. Okay, I'd like to have 115 Main Street, please. And I'd just like to clarify something, 115 Main Street is the medical building. Because there's been some confusion, people confusing 100 Main Street with 115. 115 is the medical building, that's what we're discussing tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's John Field. This is a continuation of the reduction, or the re, the removal of the floor of the parking garage, in a resulting reduction of parking spaces. We were required 114 spaces in the work session.
Excuse me, could you pick up the microphone? Because one of the problems we have is that, at home, you do not hear the voices unless you speak right into the microphone.
From the work session, we're required 114 parking spaces. We have 118 parking spaces. This is also, will result in no visual change to the building. I brought a letter to that effect. All of the change is below grade in our cellar parking area.
We also have received information from our consultant, Frank Fish, who agreed with the fact that the parking was adequate. And Mr. Williams, have you received a revised plan?
No, I haven't.
You have not received a revised plan?
No.
Because we have not received a revised plan.
The revised plans are what was sent to you, these, for the work session. These are revised floor plans that were submitted. They were also submitted to Frank Fish, for his review. There's an enlarged copy here on the board.
We need the two, we need the enlarged copies, not the, not the reduced copies.
I'll have more copies made.
We didn't get either one.
We didn't get either one of them, no.
In advance of the work session, these were submitted. This is the same package that was submitted to Frank Fish. I can go through the plans. As a reduced size, they were 11 by 17. These are the enlarged.
The 11 by 17s are adequate for approval?
No, no, those are what you received at the work session. We need the full-size drawings for, for an approval.
These, these here are the full-size drawings that I'm presenting, of the reduced parking area. I can make additional copies for you to stamp.
We need two sets, so that we can, one for the building department, and one that we stamped approved, that's our proof. So that they can go back to the average.
Okay.
Excuse me, are you saying, Bill, that we received the reduced
Yes.
Size copy a month ago?
Yes, it was first meeting. When we first came here.
On the board recall, we don't have them with us tonight. Also, John, we'd like to have your assurance, before you go ahead, that not only will this change not make any difference in the above-ground structure as we've approved it, but they also, the changes will not make any difference in the security system that was set up, or in the safety issues that have been approved.
None whatsoever. I didn't, I have a letter here.
But as I understand it, it only addresses the visual aspect. So that goes in the record.
Okay, that, yes, be sure that we state it. And you know what, let's give you a copy of this also to attach, all right? Okay. So we have them, we can approve this pending your receipt of two copies of the larger rendition of the, okay. Is there any discussion, or are there any questions? All right, no questions, no comments. Mr. Cavalero, did you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Williams, none?
John, was there anything that you were going to point out to us that we should be aware of?
No, I was going to take, I intended if needed to take you, to take you through these plans, just showing how the parking was reconfigured. Both entry levels are the same. We've effectively removed, we have entry on the second floor, the ramp down. Entry on the first floor, the ramp down. We have removed the, essentially the middle deck of parking, and brought the last level up
Right.
To the second level. All of this occurs below grade.
Right, okay.
And once again, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Besides removing the middle section of a three-layered cake here, you've made no other changes?
No changes to the exterior of the building, no changes to anything visible, no changes to the security system. No other changes.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, do we need a secret from Mr.?
Do we need a secret on this, Mr. Cavalero?
We would have to adopt a negative declaration, yes.
Okay, would you like to make a secret declaration?
The negative declaration be adopted, and that we accept the presentation with the proviso that two sets of the normal-sized copy will be provided to the building.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous, good luck. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have 40 Marble Dell Road.
Mike Humphrey, Director of Construction, Storage Deluxe. I'm not sure what drawings you have in front of you. I'm assuming that you have the signage changes, possibly the awning change that I thought we were going to be talking about tonight, which is part of the signage. That's the original.
That's the original.
Actually, that's the revised.
This is the original?
I can't see the awning. Yeah, it's the, it's the new awning. I believe the awning falls under this, under the signage category, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we originally were approved for a canvas awning on the front of the building. What we've done is changed the canvas awning to a metal awning, which is consistent with our current standard, for maintenance reasons, and because it's a standard part of our building. We, we did not change any of the dimensions. The projection away from the building, that's a little bit taller. The dimensions across the building and around the corner are exactly the same as the original canvas awning.
Can you, can you tell us, is it aluminum? What's the metal it's made of?
It's a corrugated, corrugated metal, painted with a Mylar, or a, what's the name of the paint that they use? It's a baked on, it's a baked on enamel paint.
Fused to the metal. You don't know what the metal is, is it steel, or?
It's a corrugated, 26 gauge corrugated metal.
We've never had an awning that's been presented to us made of this material, have we, Mr. Reed? No. Is there anything in the code, Mr. Cavalero, that states that this would be a material that is not acceptable?
There's nothing that excludes the material for awnings. For example, it doesn't limit it to just vinyl, for example.
And what, what did you say the reason was you changed the material?
Well, we, we originally, the design originally for the canvas, quite frankly, I don't know where it came from. All our awnings on our buildings are corrugated metal. We have 30 buildings. We only have one that has a vinyl, or a canvas awning on it, and it's, the maintenance on it is horrendous, because they get mildewed, and they look like, they look terrible within a couple of years, so. And I don't know why we used it on that facility. It was one of the first facilities we built. But all our, all our current facilities, our new facilities, have a corrugated metal awning. That's what we've been used, we've been using, so.
Can you, sir, describe the finish of the underneath, and how this awning is attached?
It's all wrapped, it's got a, it's got a steel, a steel member that's attached to the building, bolted to the building. It's framed with a light gauge steel. It's all wrapped in the sunset orange color that you see on the, on the elevation. It's got a soften underneath, which has light fixtures across the bottom of it to light the, the area underneath it. It's all the same color. That's a flat surface, as opposed to a corrugated surface. And there's a flat surface on the fascia, as well. The only corrugation is on the slope or the, the incline of the awning itself.
Does the application have a, have a diagram of the after, of the attachment mechanism?
No.
Is it, is it explained in any of the diagrams, is it provided as part of the?
Not that I know of.
It should be.
There's a continuous soften under the?
Correct.
And then downlights?
Yes. Which is part of the original design.
On the drawing that we have, looking north at the south side of the building, there are two awnings shown there. There's number one and number seven. Do you have that drawing?
Yeah, 18, 18, 19?
18, 19.
Sorry. 18 has the pre-finished canvas.
Yes, 18, 19. I was wondering if both of those awnings are being changed, or only one awning is being changed?
No, both. It wraps around the building. It's all one continuous awning, 18 and 19. One's on the frontage, one is on the entry to the loading area.
But they're two separate awnings?
They're identified as two separate awnings because of the elevation, so you can identify them. But it's one continuous awning that wraps around the building, and wraps around the office area, where the windows are, both on the frontage, and as you go in the loading area.
But they're on totally, according to our drawings, they're on totally different levels.
Fabric shall be canvas duck, or vinyl-coated canvas, or vinyl-coated, vinyl-coated polyester fabric. Solid vinyl fabric is prohibited. Maximum weight of fabric shall be 10 ounces per square yard for canvas, and 12 ounces per square yard for vinyl-coated canvas. Answer your earlier question.
That's why the original was approved as canvas.
Pardon me?
That's why their original was approved as canvas, because that's what we allowed.
Right, right.
So, sir, you were asking for a variance from this board, is that right?
Correct.
To get back to my last question, the drawing that I have here in front of me shows two awnings. Do you have this drawing?
The side of the building.
No, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm familiar with it.
You see that two awnings that I were referring to? They have different corrugation, or different lines indicating the corrugation. This awning down here, which I thought we were talking about, and now there's?
That's the one we're talking about.
You've asked corrugated metal before, and so?
We haven't changed anything on the building, except for that, except for that front, except for that front awning.
No, none of, I mean, this is definitely.
They're all fabric.
All fabric, because we have never had a presentation with anything but fabric awnings. And we've never approved anything other than fabric awnings.
To add to Member Vaughn's earlier point, the, typically in a traditional sign application, you do have the authority to vary from the regulations. But what I read you actually wasn't from our sign slash awning ordinance, it was actually from the village code. And the planning board doesn't have the authority to vary from the village code. The village board has the ability to amend it, but the planning board doesn't have the ability to grant variances from it.
Okay, so then it's a moot point, we can't even rule on it, because we don't have that authority. It would have to remain the same, and if they wanted to appeal it, it would have to go to the village board, is that what would happen?
There is not an appeal process.
There isn't?
It's the village code. They could petition the village code, I'm sorry, excuse me, the village board, to amend the village code. But there's not an appeal process.
Okay. Then it's a moot point.
When was the, you said there were metal signs on the building?
There's metal, yeah, there's a, there's a metal.
When were those affixed?
They weren't.
They haven't been affixed. They haven't been affixed. But if you look at our building, if you look at our building approved, approved building plans, if you look at the elevation that Mr. Vaughn showed me a few minutes ago.
Two different applications, you're separate from the.
Right, totally understood, totally understood, totally understood. But that's not necessarily the way, necessarily the way our architect understood it when he drew it, and the way these plans were prepared, so. Okay, so.
Well, the, the second awning I referred to calls out on this drawing, a pre-finished
Standing seam.
Standing seam metal roof panels. It doesn't say it's an awning, it's a roof panel.
Right.
So that's a little different than an awning.
Right. So how would that apply to the building?
The awning on the front of the building is an awning, and we cannot even rule on changing that. It has to be made of.
Even if we called it a roof panel?
Pardon me?
Even if we called it a roof panel?
A roof is not an awning.
Okay.
It's, it's a different.
Well, if you look at the application of that elevation, and the standing seam roof that we're talking about, and we're calling it a roof panel, it's exactly the same application.
Looking for a roof panel out there, but they can't advertise them.
Is that the reason it's called, that's? Can we not call it a roof, a roof awning?
No.
At that point, it was originally called that as a vinyl awning.
Right.
Not a roof panel, so.
This one is defined in the code?
No, it just mentions that awnings shall be of the standard barrel or hoop-type design and fabricated to conform to the shape and dimensions of window or doorway openings. Other configurations shall not be permitted, except where specifically necessitated by an unusual window shape. And that they should be stationary. But it doesn't give a formal definition of what an awning is.
And I don't think there's a definition of roof panel, do you?
Not that I'm aware of. There's, there's no definite, even in the definition section, there's no definition of awning or roof panel.
Why are you referring to this as a roof panel?
Okay. Because there was a distinction between an awning, a distinction between the roof panel and the awning, when in fact, if you look at the, the elevation on the south and the north, the two, the two panels that are shown there as, are roof panels, is exactly the same application as the, we're calling it awning over the office. The only difference is there's signing, signage contained on, on the awning, which is why they're calling it an awning. Certainly call it a roof panel, because that's exactly what it is, to protect you when you're coming in.
Except that I'm going in a different direction, and you may not realize where I'm going. Which one of these, is it the seven? I have this document, this is the only thing I have in front of me. On this one, which is, characterizes the roof panel, number one? Because it looks like it's number one, because it's called roof panel. All right, to be, to be. You need to actually, this is, since this is being recorded, you need to bring your microphone, because you're making a public record. When you call that a roof panel, how far out is that? See, I don't have any of the documents that describe how that is affixed to the building, how far out it comes out, projected through the building. My first thought is now, is this a shed roof type panel?
Could probably be described as a shed roof panel.
Well, I need you to describe it for me, because you see, I'm looking at this, and I'm going for the basic definition of awning, and it's still going to fit under the basic definition of awning, and I'm going to hold it to awning right now. I need a description of what number one is. How far does it project from the building? How is it affixed to the building? I don't know, I don't have a document that tells me that. The application is not before me completely.
We're not making an application for the roof panel on that elevation.
Okay.
His application is for only the one awning, which is at the front, it wraps around.
So why are we talking about the roof panel anyway?
Because he brought it up as saying that.
Somebody, well, Mr. Vaughn asked me about it.
He's justified in putting metal on the awning, because he has, excuse me, a metal roof panel. That's what his, which.
Where's the roof panel approved, do we know?
I'm sorry?
Excuse me?
When, or was the roof panel approved?
I wonder when the site plan was approved.
And from this drawing, I'm trying to decide that whether or not that roof panel is meant to serve as shade or protection from the weather over what appears to be a loading dock, is that correct?
Correct. The same could be set, for true for the awning over the entrance of the office. Except we're calling it an awning, as opposed to a roof. And the distinction between, the distinction between the awning and the roof is the signage application? So if we remove the signage application, could it still be considered a roof panel? And protection from the, coming out the street?
The one that you're here, tonight?
Yes.
No, no.
Cannot.
No, because it's, it's clearly an awning. The other is over a loading dock with an awning, which is on the front of a building with, with words written that have, that are defining the business that's in the building, and, and its function is not the same.
Not to provide for protection when you're coming in, in and out of the building?
But it's a loading dock, it's not something where it's on the front of, otherwise we could, we could say that every, every awning is, is really a roof. There's a difference. I mean, you're covering a loading dock, it's not the same as something that projects onto the sidewalk, or onto a walk area. So, it's not the same, it's just not, so, that's.
Mr. Cavalero, does the code, in, in talking about awning, describe what type of building, or portion of a building it's affixed to, or what its purpose could be?
It did indicate that it's covering doorways or windows, and can be unusual in shape when the window is unusual in shape. Which is consistent with number six on the plan that's submitted, because it's, as the chairperson pointed out, it's covering a window or a doorway.
Well, I think that you've come to us for a change in the material of the awning. It's clear from our code that we are not, it's not our function, or it's not our, even possible for us to do a ruling on that. So therefore, we, we can't vote one way or the other, because it isn't even in our purview. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next on the agenda is 62 Main Street, the sign for the Chase Bank. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dominic Paparella, I'm Vice President with National Maintenance, Design Installation Company, representing Chase on this application. We are proposing two sets of non-illuminated plate letters. 14-inch letters, and with an 18-inch logo. I would like, at this time, to present revised plans for the board's evaluation. Page one represents the front elevation. Page one represents the front elevation. Page one represents the front elevation with the sign centered left to right. Page two is the second option for the front elevation, which illustrates the sign centered over the bay window. And page three is, just represents the, the side elevation sign.
I noticed that you put a logo on your front window. It's not here, but it's on the front window of the store, of the, of the building.
Yeah, we'd like to actually see it this way.
You have a picture of it?
No, the picture that shows without the logo in the window. We'd like to-
It's without the logo in the window, and that logo covers more than the percentage of the window that it's supposed to cover, that it's allowed to cover. So that has to be removed, because it, it does not, it's not to code.
Understood, Madam.
Okay. I don't know if this is your responsibility-
No, actually, no.
But you might inform the bank that this is a problem.
Fine.
Okay. That window faces in on the ATM machine, does it not?
I believe so, yes.
It does?
That is correct.
This is a big improvement over what we saw the last time. Appreciate your cooperation. And I certainly don't think it- ...of the sign. It's just in more, it's still a big sign. It's still, it's more in keeping with the scale of the building.
I think it's more imbalanced-
Right, right.
-with the building.
Well, before you had letters that were-
Eighteen inches.
I had one foot eight inches.
Ah, that is correct.
Eighteen inches.
So that's more than eight inches.
Twenty inches, twenty inches, yeah.
That is correct. I stand corrected.
Yeah. And now, they're 14 inches? Okay, so that's a big difference. And it makes a huge difference in the building, I do. Um, right now, I'm inclined to say that I like it centered on the building, as opposed to the window, and I didn't think that would be the case. However, both of them are acceptable. I mean, they're both work.
I have a question on the parking lot elevation.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that the, there is a sign that's affixed right now. Is that a 20-inch height that's currently there?
No, the one, the other one that's up there now, without a doubt, is, is a lot larger than the one we're proposing. That is not, again, that is not our sign that we, that, we, we were not part of that installation, which I guess was prior to us coming on board.
Okay. With that, are you planning to remove that and place whatever is now approved over the space that that one currently occupies?
Absolutely, yes.
Because that sits beside the sign that says yoga heaven. And I noticed that coming here tonight, and I just-
Right.
It, it occurred to me that there will be two signs on the side of that building. I don't have a problem with that at this point, but I didn't realize that before, that's all.
Yeah. Again, the only thing that I, I could add to this is that the, the signs that are going up are replacing whatever is existing.
I think that the first option that centers over the building sort of resolved.
Question mark.
What?
Move, move.
To accept the, as we agreed upon, a discussion, which way do you want? The center of the?
Signage on both sides, I suppose?
Signage on both sides.
Okay, with center?
Centered on the-
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Other than the fact that the applicant has indicated they will remove what currently exists in the window, that a large, uh, blue logo must be removed, I have no problem with giving that.
Well, as the gentleman said, he's, he did not put it up, and he's not responsible for the people, but he's going to inform-
Absolutely.
-the folks at the bank, so this way they will-
I, I just want to make that part of the motion.
Okay. Pardon? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Backing members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
The next item on our agenda is 2B Columbus Avenue Windows sign. The, I just, here it is. ABC Window Fashions and Interiors.
Good evening, members of the board. I had submitted several copies-
Could you pick up the microphone, please, and speak into it?
Is it okay if I just stand here?
Pick it off the cradle and-
Well, you don't have to, but you can bring it close enough.
That's good, that's easy.
Good evening, members of the board. I had submitted eight copies of my revised sign for the storefront of our store located on, located at 2B Columbus Avenue. It was originally submitted as a ivory-based color with a red, almost mahogany-like lettering, which was not approved, and it was resubmitted as a green, dark green base color with white lettering. I assume that all of you have that.
So you're proposing the top one?
Correct.
And I'd just like to say that this is all we've gotten. We require pictures of the facade of the building, the stores, or whatever is on either side of it, how the, the sign is going to be fastened to the building, samples of the material, and we've only received this.
As far as it being fastened to the building, what was going to be used is a J-type bracket made of aluminum. You're welcome to take a look at this material if you'd like. It's a typical type of J-bracket.
Is it on the sides? We don't know how thick this sign is. Is it metal over wood, or is it all?
I have an exact piece of the material, if you'd like to see it.
Yes.
It's an MDO board.
So it's painted wood?
As far as its exact placement, I did have provided a, which I received late Friday. Do have a copy in which I could enable all of you to view as far as its placement.
See, we're, we're going to require that you have a, a rendering of the sign, but also that you have a representation of how it's going to be attached to the wall. This is all part of the application.
Right.
On the, in the application itself, it gave a listing of what is required, and we need these in order to approve the sign. So, I mean, we can look at this, but to be honest with you, I don't feel comfortable without having that as well, because then what we're saying is, oh, you're going to bolt it to the building. But we don't know how thick it is, we don't know, we don't have any representation, so if the building inspector comes to see it, he can see that it's being put up the way it was supposed to be put up and agreed upon. So this is a problem.
We need a little mechanical drawing, a little section with annotations of what, how it's being done, how it's being attached.
Okay.
And photographs?
Can you chuck that?
And the thickness of the sign?
Sure.
Okay, so how it's being attached to where, and so on. This is 120 inches.
Yeah, this is too big.
This is, see, this sign is very large. It's, it's much too large for the front of that store.
My concern is, is a few different things. One is that, as far as from the curbside, the setback of the, of the overhang is, I'm just estimating approximately 28, 25 to 30 feet. As one is driving through the intersection, whether, it could be debated whether or not our store would be visible. I've looked at this countless number of times, and I just don't see as to how, you know, we would be clearly-
All right, I'm going to tell you something. I saw the sign that was, that is presently there, which was not approved-
Right.
-which is much smaller than this. I was across the street in the post office parking lot, and I could read that whole sign. So I don't really think that a sign this large is necessary for it to be seen from the sidewalk or across the street. Plus the fact that this is an inappropriate size, because this is not the size sign that we allow. So I, I think you, you have to consult the application, look at the code, and make sure that you're conforming to what it is that the code says the sign is supposed to be. Okay? And we need those pictures, and also the mechanical drawing about the fastening to the building.
Sure.
Okay, and how, where it's being fastened to.
Right, its placement.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was just wondering-
Do you want to take this back?
Sure.
Okay.
I was just wondering, one other thing. When, when I look at it from a perspective of being a business owner here in the, in the village, as well as a resident in the village, I'm wondering, what, what process do we have to really go through, if, should one decide that they would like to see some changes made within the ordinance?
Correct. This, this area here is a common space area. There's only the entrance, there's a dividing line between both. You, you can't go from the-
A dividing line is not a wall. Is there a wall that's floor-to-ceiling and nobody can walk through it?
Yes. It's doors.
So you're telling me there's a wine store on one side, there's a wall, and nobody can walk through that wine store to get to your gourmet section and the meal-making facility?
No, not directly. You can't go directly from the wine shop into the-
You have to go outside the store to go into the meal-making facility?
No, you would go from, basically, from the wine shop, you would have to go into this common space, which is a lobby area that's boxed in.
Vesterbuil, right.
Right, exactly. It's a large vesterbuil, and you would have to enter through a separate door to go into, into the rest of the food shop.
All right, so this vesterbuil has a door into the wine shop and a door, then a separate door into the food establishment?
Yes, and we did that to, to comply, quite frankly, with liquor, liquor construction.
Liquor.
And, you know, we had to do exactly what you mentioned because of that. There's no fluffing it.
See, the, the difficulty here is that, first of all, we do not allow, yes, please, we do not allow signs that are advertisements. And this beer and wine shop, gourmet foods, meal-making facilities, is really a description of what you do. It's, it's like an advertisement. The Sip and Supper tells us that it's a food establishment, but it would be, the name would be Sip and Supper Wine Shop, or, what is the legal name of the wine store, of the wine shop?
Sip and Supp-, it's, it's Ibooth Inc., DBA Sip and Supper Wines. That's the corporate entity that was created for the wine shop exclusively.
So the, so the sign, it should really be Sip and Supper Wines and Sip and Supper. In other words, first of all, we should have two applications. If there are two stores, we should have two applications. Secondly, there has to be two clear distinct names. Sip and Supper is a name. Beer and Wine Shop is a description, it's not a name. We know it's a shop, but it's what it's got to be. So, and beer and wine just tells the product that you're selling. We need a name for that store.
Our thought process was that this was going to be read as one sign, which was originally the Sip and Supper Meal Making Facility Beer and Wine Shop, because it was trying to simplify by keeping it all under Sip and Supper. I mean, we have come up with two other concepts, but to, to argue your point in regards to nature, Sip and Supper, I mean, we need to be differentiated that this really isn't a restaurant, because you can't eat there. This is to pick up foods and, and leave. So whereas Nikki's Corner Deli and Caterers was emphasized on the prior sign, at least we would want to go ahead and have Sip and Supper Gourmet Foods on one sign, and possibly on the other sign, Sip and Supper Wines. I have prepared some other versions for the board. The only one that's neglected, that, that I don't have, is the one that says Sip and Supper Wine Shop. But if I may, I'd like to just show these to you-
Sure.
-as, as, as an alternative.
Sure.
This one has Sip and Supper Beer and Wine Shop Meal Making Facility Gourmet Foods. These can be alternated within any one of the signs. Correct. This is, and here is it showing to Sip and Supper on one, but here the most important one is Sip and Supper Gourmet Foods being on one side. Whereas we could go ahead and put the other one as Sip and Supper Wines.
See, the problem is this. The wine shop is here. How do, you're going to put Sip and Supper Wines here and then put Sip and Supper-
Gourmet Foods with a-
On this one?
Correct, and we'll make a level height difference. And I will, and I will submit drawings-
This is also part of this establishment?
Correct. All three. And Mrs. Raffiani is here, the owner of the house, is here, because these were meant and set up to be individual tenants. Happens to be that a unique individual with a unique circumstance came in, where he's rented three storefronts.
Right, right, which is fine.
Yeah, which is great for us. But once again, to convey, I mean, yes, we could flip the Sip and Supper Wines along with the Gourmet Foods.
So what you're proposing as a possibility, see if I'm correct in assuming this, the first, the first store on the left, which has the entrance with the little lobby area, would say Sip and Supper Wines?
Correct.
The second would say Sip and Supper, and then the third would say Gourmet Foods?
No.
No.
Sip and Supper Gourmet Foods will be on one sign.
One sign.
And Sip and Supper Wine Shop will be on the other, whereas the, the lobby entry-
And what about the third one?
The lobby entryway is the center one. So we would be leaving the entryway blank and putting the wine shop on the left-hand side. We need to write this-
Confusing.
All right, well, if I heard you correctly, there are three possible sign areas.
Can I see that, please?
Correct.
There are three, let's call them storefronts, okay?
Sign bands.
There's the large one that is on the eastern side of the building, and that has two entrances. It has a front entrance and a side entrance.
Correct.
Correct? And that one would say Sip and Supper Wine and Beer.
Wines.
Wines.
No beer.
Wine, sorry. Okay. Wine. And, and then the next one going westwardly is the center one, and that would be blank.
Would be blank.
And the third one going westwardly would say Sip and Supper Gourmet Foods.
Which we would prefer having the center one say Sip and Supper and Gourmet Foods, just to not leave a sign band blank. I mean, I know it doesn't fall under-
Repeat it twice?
Excuse me? No, no, where, where we would put, our, our options are Sip and Supper Wines on the left. That's already determined.
Right.
We're all in agreement with that.
Yeah.
But to fill up the other two bands is where we want to go ahead and separate the text. Where you put Sip and Supper on the center one, because that's the common area to either go to the Gourmet Foods to the right, or to go to the wine shop to the left. That's our main entrance. Whereas on the right-hand side, you'll get your Gourmet Foods, the left shop is wine. If we had to leave one blank, it would be the center one, because, because gourmet food entrance is on the right-hand side. So it would be complete to say Sip and Supper Gourmet Foods.
But the Sip and Supper and the, this is-
I know.
Peter Piper picked a, back of the book, it was a Sip and Supper.
We went, we went, we went back and forth about 15 times ourselves.
If we, if you put Sip and Supper Wines, that's the, also the entrance to the gourmet food shop.
Technically, you got to walk through there into the other door.
And you're not being able to, yeah, but if I looked at the front of this store, I would think that I should be able to get in through the door that's in the center, or through the one in, in the extreme right store, because that's where the name is.
That's where, why you need to give us three signs.
That's why you need to have an entrance-
Are there three doors?
-on that side. No, there are-
First, three storefronts. All three are going to be active, correct?
They'll be active.
All three are, are active.
That's confusing.
I thought you said it was going to be the black door.
The wine shop is blocked off by law.
Right.
But there is a door.
No, 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 but I thought you said that that door is not a usual-
Well, these two doors, the ones that are together are actually used for handicapping access, so there are going to be functioning doors.
These other two?
Yes. Over here, yes.
I would bet they have to be functional because of fire. Unless you block out that door, it's a functioning door.
No, it has to have a push button.
I mean, it is a unique situation, but if we view that as just being one sign- I mean, it is a unique situation, but if we view that as just being one sign but taking up two panels is what we're asking for, a slight there. Please.
Hi, Laura Raffiani, Marado Properties, representing the landlord. We rented property, it is technically three stores, it's three addresses, he has combined it in his own way, wherever, however, he has to split them up, but from the street it's visible as three stores. And if you look at the, the one example which has the blank one in the middle, to me it's like it's a vacant store. It, it appears like there's another vacancy in Tukahoe, again, in the village of Tukahoe. It just doesn't, doesn't complete the building. I think that by allowing him to break up that sign into the two pieces, it gives it what the building needs, just from a visual standpoint. You know, we just don't want to see that empty sign up there. Especially if it's, it's likely going to be the entrance to the lobby of, of both. So it, it, either way, you're going to leave one empty, whatever it is, whether it's the main entrance or the side building or whatever, but visually looking at it, it's just going to be, look like a vacant store, whether it's in the middle or on the side or in the back or whatever. You're going to get that impression of a vacant store building, which is not something that we'd like to put forth. I think that the, the best solution, I don't, I don't see it here, is it up there? The best, best solution is sip and supper wine and then sip and supper and then gourmet foods, where you have something on each one of those.
Sip and supper in the middle, on the left and gourmet food on the right.
I have comments.
We didn't settle for that.
We're supposed to be speaking on our phone.
That would be more sensible. That would be much more sensible.
I have comments, may I speak?
Sure.
First of all, we have a sign code. You know what the sign code was, you built the building, you knew what it was, you built your building that way with whatever tools you got from this panel, this board before I was on it, okay? Now because of a somewhat different concept, we're trying to shoehorn in a business concept that doesn't exist in too many places, certainly not in Tukahoe at this point, into a sign code that you knew about when you built the building.
We had no way of predicting that.
I'm speaking now, please let me finish. You got your, you, you had your comments, now I have comments. I'm a little uncomfortable with trying to shoehorn in a business concept with a sign card that was pretty clear from the beginning. That's number one. You do have three entrances, they're all functional presently. If I understand the description correctly, there's a fourth entrance on the interior promenade, is that so?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a fourth entrance. Is that entrance?
No.
Okay, is that entrance going to be identified in any way to the outside?
I'm sure it'll have a, something on the door itself.
Okay, so that's essentially four entrances for really one and possibly two businesses. And the only reason it's a second business is because liquor requires licensing. Otherwise it'd be the same business. And last, you know, the signage, I'm tempted to say is your problem because of the nature of the business, but since it's here and since we all have to address it, my suggestion would actually echo Mr. Williams, which is to put sip and supper on the center beside, the center of the three windows facing Main Street, wine left and gourmet foods on the right. I would not repeat sip and supper, first of all, for the simple aesthetic reason that if you repeat it once, you must repeat it three times. You can't leave one hanging and not be identified. If you're going to have to identify it as the function, as the entity that it is, it is in fact sip and supper and two signs beside that, that one of the products or the product should actually be adequate.
In order to create a little bit more balance, is it possible that we can just put the word wine shop so you have sip and supper in the center, wine shop on the left? Because just the word wine within a 14-foot span, at least you have a little bit of symmetry with nine letters.
This is.
Yeah, that's actually two words, so it's 20 feet. Between the three signs, they'll be almost the same width.
I really don't think that that should be such little type, such little.
We can make the text slightly bigger, which we submit to them. Or.
But this technically is sip and supper wine. And this is, what, what we're really asking for is for them to break this up into two.
We want two panels as, as a, just inverting the name of the business.
I have another question. The two entrances that are beside each other, collecting a better way to describe it at this hour of the night.
104 and 106?
Those are never going to be used except for handicap customers?
I couldn't say never, no. I would say we'd use it with.
This is your main entrance. No, you understand, this is your main entrance. This goes into your lobby.
There will be three entrances that people can use. One is a dual entrance and the other two are individual, but, okay, so three entrances into the food portion and one into the, the two if you use the one on the side.
Yes.
Okay, the other point I want to make is right now we're all looking at blacked-out windows basically or whited-out windows. Those windows are going to be clear.
Yes.
There's going to be a, a line of sight right into those businesses. It occurs to me that how you set up your interior is going to educate a passerby about what's going on in that business, what that business consists of, what it is that, you know, selling. What are you planning to put in your?
Well, the, the area that has the, is basically the area where the meal making kitchen is housed. It's not an industrial-looking kitchen, it's not a commercial, everything is white and sterile and, and, you know, and it's nothing attractive. Designed to look, who has a fantastic state-of-the-art kitchen that you'd love to, to play around in. That's what that was created to look like. So the aesthetic looks of it, down, wine trellises that, that are from the ceiling, we've put in plasma televisions to show Food Network, that nature during working hours. So the area itself is actually very aesthetically pleasing and I think will certainly gravitate towards because of the fact of, of its attractive nature. The area that's looking down closer to the, the promenade, that lobby area is actually going to have a sort of, as I like to describe, an Ikea-esque kind of look to it, couple of couches and a, and a small, like maybe to somebody, to a building, apartment building, a couple of couches and maybe a television there as well. So again, aesthetically, it will be very attractive from the outside, but that meal making kitchen part up there, if I'm walking by, I wouldn't know, quite honestly, what that, what the function is of that space inside. You may be able to see it, but I don't think anybody will be able to figure out that we are about gourmet foods or, or what have you. So.
Okay, is the wine portion?
Mr. Cavallaro has to leave because he has to go to another meeting. I think you had a comment.
Just had two quick questions. Is sip and supper a franchise or is this a newly created?
No, it's independent.
Independent. Do you have locations anywhere else?
No, this is my first.
Are any, I'm just curious if there are any counters or pass-through windows, something, I won't call it a drive-thru, but let me call it a walkthrough with purchase right through from the sidewalk portion.
Honestly, the, the convenience part of it is, is, is very, very, is the top three things that we're, that we're, you know, trying to put. But for somebody to be able to order it online and say, "I'm coming at 4:30 to pick it up" and we're aware that they're coming, there, meals are ready to take, basically pop in the oven for them. So the convenience is there, but I don't know to the extent of actually delivering it or, or doing it outside of the door like that. Eventually, maybe it might develop into a delivery service, you know, where we have delivery, but right now it's really, the convenience itself is just being able to do it online and in person.
Be a problem because it's on Main Street.
Right, the board may want to consider a condition that there not be a pass-through window.
Yeah.
To continue with what you're describing is going to be visible to the public through the windows. What is the wine portion going to look like through the window?
The wine portion of actually, there was two front windows, I'm, I'm working with a few interior designer, project of maybe designing a window, a window, as I described as sort of Macy's-esque in, in, in style, that would be something hopefully that would attract people to, to it as well. But we don't have any definitive ideas because of the fact that we're also waiting for licensing and it's, it'll be something that we'll focus on a little bit more after the, after the remarks.
Okay, is it possible that through the window that, I'd like to have a wine shop. Are bottles of wine going to be visible right on a shelf or a series of shelves?
Yes. But it will be.
And how far away from the window are you expecting those to be?
I'm sorry, say it again.
How far away from the window are you expecting those to be at this?
Oh, it's, no, it's, it's over in this area, but it, it would probably, storage of wines near, when some, direct sunlight's not a good idea, so. I'm sorry?
That's the south side, that directs only about noon.
Right, well, I mean, anything will be good for the wine, but we wouldn't, it's not, of wine right in the window. Everything will be along the.
Thing is, the ability of your services and your products themselves and explain themselves through a clear glass window is actually very high, thereby minimizing the need for you to, to describe what those services are on your signage.
We would have to disagree because it's just, right, you're talking about just walking traffic that has the ability to go ahead and see that.
Right.
Whereas you have driving traffic and people that don't know, hence the reason for a sign. Buy on strictly your, advertise your business, half the business is under that theory.
Uh huh. Uh huh.
Yeah, that's why we need to have three signs on our store, on their, on our stores.
I didn't say three signs for me. I'm, I've got to flesh this out because I have to make a decision and extraordinarily unique and I'm not going to make an ignorant decision about it.
Through the windows doing our advertising for our products, which is our sign's job, whereas he technically does have two businesses, Tukahoe's law, we at least are granted two signs, at least. And I think due to the unique circum, that the third sign, I mean, he encompasses three storefronts, which is unique.
Yeah, I would like to. Sure. Do you have a, or a brand?
Yes.
Or is this?
Yes.
It sounds like a very interesting and exciting concept that comes to downtown. Is, is exciting, it's also very diff, makes it more difficult for us. But, but, but let me say, the fact that you have the need to describe that, and I think that it's evident to everybody, if it's taking us this long to understand, then you have to go to extra lengths to explain it to the passersby on the street. So, so I think that there is, that there is some need to go to extra lengths to do that, appropriate way to do that. I think if you have the description of the product on the sign, I think it's just with that. And having sort of a monotonous homogeneous way of treating it, wine and liquor, gourmet foods, sip and supper, all in the same typeface, that's, that's not going to help. And so the reason why I asked for your logo is that maybe the thing that's stamped on each three and then you have, sort of in a smaller manner, well, but, but, but the way that it's branded, some way of, some way of including the description.
I mean, ideally, we would have largely put our logo on our signs.
Yeah.
But due to prior.
Yes.
Which we've had.
Right.
I was, didn't have his logo before we even started this process.
Yes.
And so we as always try to, couple of options and we're willing to, this is such a unique situation.
So what are you, to be.
Commissioner Vaughn is about to say, except for the fact that wine shop, in order to give us some.
I would like to go further than that because sign blocks are very long on the store.
Especially the first one.
Long signage would, do and whatever we put on, stretching out. So what I'd like to, to the board for their consideration, the first one would say sip and supper wines, because that's what it is. The next one would say sip and supper gourmet foods, because that's what you're doing. Would say sip and supper meal making, because those are, you know, pick that up from your original, what you're trying to do and those are, those signs would, to me, describe what's going on here and is, could be actual signs. I think it makes more sense over the three doors. I think if you don't describe the doors somehow, they're just going to look silly to have three doors to the same business. I also think, full band with letters rather than just have a tiny little wine shop in the middle, that's my opinion and so, you know, I just throw it out there.
I'd just like to say before you make your comment that I think that's too much. I think the, wine or wine shop sip and supper and gourmet foods would be a better distribution of the, because I think it just, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's too much. I, I think it, it would, it's, it's more than we would allow in other places and it would set a precedent, but I don't think it would be good anyway. Is anyone else?
Wine, if, if, if we could do the wine shop, Paul, forgive me if, if I'm speaking turn, but if we could do the wine shop on the left-hand side, sip and supper in the center and gourmet foods on the right-hand side, because we really don't like the concept of meal making facility. I don't think that, it sounds like you could come there and cook, which really, it, it's not what, the class of what business we're trying to portray. And, and I think if our, we would love to put our logo on the center sign, we know we're not allowed it, but if sip and supper can go on the center, we could flank it with the wine shop and gourmet foods, it matches our layout, though it is three signs, it really reads as one.
For what it's worth, you, you say your, your sip and supper typeface is as much your logo as your little plate with the fork. It's, it's, you're not, you simply don't have your complete logo that you'd love to have, but you do have typeface and, and that's, you know, you've got to have a typeface. So that in and of itself does serve as an identifier that unifies the three signs, which is saving for you, I'd say that. Because using the same typeface on your postcard and I'm assuming your products are going to have the same typeface and that's as much a logo as a little insignia with a plate and fork.
We don't have any products, we don't, we don't, we don't know, we don't have a label product, products. These items.
Put your items in when they carry out?
They'll have a shop.
I get the idea though, it's, it's no less the logo and, and that helps. By the way, facility is spelled on.
One more suggestion. I, of the three signs, I think that wine shop or wine, is going to get a little lost. Just sip and supper, supper gourmet foods. So in essence, you, big and long and put together and the other sign is in two separate pieces, but it kind of reads. Um, but it kind of reads as, you know, pulled together as one and, and, and visually, those letters will, like, kind of fill up the space in the same way. That, it's just a, like, kind of a visual see, you don't want to see this little kind of twirpy thing on the really big sign. The smallest amount of lettering on the biggest sign there is.
And it'll also give you this association that the businesses are one in the same, like you had mentioned, if it wasn't for the Liquor Authority, it probably wouldn't
I don't understand your last proposal. Say that again.
Um, on the, on the very first sign, which is the larger one, sip and supper wine shop. On the next sign, sip and supper, which is the main entrance, kind of, right?
Yeah.
And then on the next sign, the, um, gourmet foods. So, so basically, you're
Just gourmet foods?
Just gourmet foods, so you're, the, the last two signs become one, and that's the area. Through those two windows, you see sip and supper gourmet food, you see that food preparation area, that whole kitchen is, you know, and, and because they kind of sit back also, they're on the same plane, and then that other sign is on a different
So are you
Absolutely. I mean, if, we have a grant which would be very difficult for me to, me to meet anyway. So what I'm hoping is, is that we can get a general approval of what we just said in context, sip and supper, wine shop, sip and supper, gourmet foods, three signs. I will resubmit to Bill first thing tomorrow morning, eight copies or seven copies, however how many men you want, and he could distribute them to the board. Which we have
I mean, you could have temporary signs for the opening, too.
True.
That just get pasted up here. And the actual heights of the, of the signage is what?
The final page will go ahead and show you that even with the the T in the letter, you're looking at eight and five-eighths of an inch letter, but in all actuality, it's only a six and three.
And how does that relate to the other sign?
Nikki's Corner Deli is six and three-quarters, Salon Delion, once again, because of its ascender and descender, it turns out to be about an 11-inch letter, but the A in Salon is only five and three-quarters. So they're all within an inch of six inches, but due to the different fonts, it's a little bit different.
And it's the same materials as you have on
Same substrate, same backlamp material, same attachment method, as we had said. Sure that, that we kept that as a standard. So same material, same age.
And same attachment to the
If you notice on the, on the signs that are there now, um, he painted substrate to match the metal that's there, it, it has an epoxy coating, so it has this matte texture to it. You would, you cannot even see whether, it looks like the letters are mounted right onto the metal, and it looks really, really nice.
Thank you.
Great talk.
All right. To move that, uh, the board accept for the final suggestion of three signs. The first one reading sip and supper wine shop. The second one reading sip and supper. And the third one reading gourmet foods.
We have a special
Why, I mean, I, I still can't help but thinking you still have a lot of space, and I'd have no problem with I don't know how the feeling is.
Don't prefer that, because I think that's wordy, I would prefer that over letting the third sign, uh, simply say gourmet.
So you would say
I'm either going to go for complete uniform, I'm going to either go form there, I'm going to and that's not a threat, it's not meant to be a threat, that's simply
So in other words
To me, to just say the right is, um, if the concept is to unify, you've, you've completely shot the concept out happen to think it is worthy, and I am very fearful that it'll I have to pick a concept, although it's unifying it. Third one?
Yeah, in other words, as I had proposed earlier.
Maybe you don't need foods, maybe you could just go with sip and supper gourmet or sip and supper foods. I don't know if you can both gourmet and foods.
Sorry, if you put that all in, sip and supper gourmet foods, how tight, how is that going to look? I mean, then we're talking about balance.
Well, I could just tell you right off the bat, if you were to take sip and supper at the letter height, which is 93 inches, approximately eight feet, 39 inches, almost another eight Even if I was to change the turning, it wouldn't fit within that 168-inch panel, which is 14 feet. Still, although I have so much space on panel number one,
Right.
I'm limited on panel number two and three. So once again, because we have a definitive sign band
Yeah, I know, my, my S and S. Sip and supper on the center and S and S.
How about the logo?
S and S. I can't, I can't undercut code, and you know that.
You just did for Chase.
Cut the code. Um, for sip and, I'm just throwing this out, I'm not sure I even like it, but since we're throwing things out. Sip and supper in the center, S and S, wine shop on the left, S and S, gourmet or gourmet foods. Not quite the unit quantity, it's a little
Or, or another right wine shop on one side, which is smaller because of the description, and then you have sip and supper gourmet foods on the other side, gourmet foods smaller, but it's the description, but you would feature corporate identity three times identically, well on the side.
You just do it in two different letter heights.
Two different letter heights.
Two different fonts.
Or two different fonts. I think that'd be
The fonts again.
No, you do two, two different fonts, but it'd be a way of punching, punching home your corporate identity. Because sip and supper, sip and supper is going to get lost, I can't tell when I'm looking at this, uh, what the name of the, what the name of the shop was, and I call the question.
All right, he's calling the question. All right, repeat your motion.
Okay, the motion is that there would be three signs on three, uh, over three window areas, and the first sign would be sip and supper wine shop. The second one would be sip and supper, the third one would be gourmet foods. That's the motion on
That's the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we have
Aye.
All opposed, nay, or nay?
Okay, so it didn't pass.
It did, well, it didn't pass, oh, I'll just, okay. Do we have another motion? Someone want to make another motion?
Uh, propose that the, uh, proposal with if I remember this sip and supper wine shop on the left, sip and supper in the middle, and sip and supper, sip and supper gourmet foods on the right.
That's what you just said.
No, you just
Just won't fit as I change that, that, that letter.
I'll second that.
I have to have no one that one.
You need to take a vote on that, that's the second motion, you don't need to take a
Yeah, the discussion is that it's a, that it's a moot kind of motion because it won't fit, uh, unless he makes the letter size different from all the other letter sizes, it's so small. So, you know, I don't think it's going to work personally, but motion on floor, it'll hold on.
All right, that's it?
Yeah.
Right?
I'm not happy with it because the sign, the window size, size does not, um, stand that size sign on the right-hand unit.
So we're both nay.
Nay and I'm a nay.
That's one more, one more shot.
Can pass.
Yes?
Yes.
And how about this?
On, on the
The last motion.
On the gourmet foods on the right?
Sip and supper gourmet foods on the third sign.
Before I go for this one, or not for this one, I've not heard a response to sip and supper gourmet or sip and supper foods, which would fit on the right-hand side, and I'm saying response from the applicant is what I'm
Well, you can't do that now because of the motion on the floor, you have to vote here or
Well, it was already in front of the applicant, and I never got a response.
Well, you didn't make a motion, so there's a motion on the floor, you have to respond to the
The motion is on the floor, so you can either vote for it or abstain or vote
Yeah, but we've already had three, so, um, and the first one was a vote three to two, as I recall.
Right.
Why did you take a second motion?
Because I asked if there were second one, because there were many other suggestions, and I gave an opportunity for there to be another motion.
But when there's a panel of five and three vote, and yay, and two vote nay, why is there a second motion?
Because you can make as many motions in the evening as you wish. There's no limit
Is that, is that Robert's rule of order?
Yes, it is, there's no limit to the number of motions you can make.
And at what point are we looking for a total number of votes to have a motion passed?
Majority.
And three out of five is a majority, is it not?
No, no, no. Three out of five would be a majority, so with three nays right here.
But the first motion, if I recall correctly, was for
A nay.
gourmet foods all the way to the right, and it was three in support.
No, I voted against, I voted against that at all.
Okay, so that was two in support and three against.
Right. And this is the same. Oh, I'm sorry, this is three, one, and yours, whatever it is. Three against, one
You see how good I am? Okay, so that was the same motion twice?
No, that was
Okay. Three, no, so one yes on the five, pursuing. Well, I made the motion. I seconded it. Uh, rather, I seconded it. That would be an affirmative.
I'm going to tell you why I voted against this. Because I don't know what the third sign is going to look like, and therefore, I would like to know what the possibilities are.
Why don't I go ahead and for, for, both our client will create his opening signs, I'll write a letter to the trustees to ask, request a temporary sign. I will then create a layout with, um, both options as discussed by the board, and then hopefully, we can get a decision from that. I mean, the client has just came up with another suggestion, which is sip and supper, well, sip and, S and S wines, sip and supper, and S and S gourmet foods. So I will include that as a third. We just don't want our, we just don't want him to open up that sign. I'll make them look just like they are.
All right.
Is that okay with you guys?
All right. Then we'll see you next
Hey, can I include, can I include one with the logo?
You can present whichever, whatever you'd like.
If you're going to be, um, dumbing up some new stuff, why don't you, and you have the time or the intention or the financial backing, um, what, could you try sip and supper in an, on an upper portion of the sign, and then the, uh, particular item, the wine shop below sip and supper? I realize it's an eighteen-inch panel, and it's going to be
I'll look at that, it may be crowded.
I want to see it because I, I'm pretty convinced it won't fit, but I want to see it.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay.
And run that across as a, as a, as a, um,
I'll change the font.
You're actually going to have to put the gourmet foods, you won't have to do it, put sip and supper in the center.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Thank you very much.
Like to order sweet bourbon steak?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone.